This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, the first thing we have is a approval for the we're gonna do the 4:00 PM one right first, right?
Yeah.
Is that right?
It's a roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the first thing we'll do, we'll call meeting order, we'll have a roll call.
Councilor Perry?
Yeah.
Councilor Foster?
Here.
Councilor Haldenbrand?
Present.
Councilor Sanchez?
Sanchez.
Councilor Arnold?
Present.
Councilor Best?
Here.
Councilor Halverson?
Here.
Councilor Moore?
Here.
Councilor Corn?
Here.
Councilor Oropesa?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay. Okay, next we have a motion for approval of the agenda.
Approval of the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, from Corn, we have a motion by Councilman Corn, we have a second. By Council Lady Arnold. Any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilor Perry? Approval of the agenda. Councilor Foster?
Yes.
Councilor Haldenbrand?
Aye.
Councilor Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
Councilor Best?
Yes.
Councilor Halverson?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Corn?
Yes.
Councilor Oropesa?
Yes.
Motion passed and sent to zero.
Thank you, okay. Next, we have act time zoning case number 23 dash 006. The final flat subdivision for Goddard Ridge Estate subdivision. Subdivide three and a half acres for an 18-foot lot townhouse or subdivision on the south and east side of Country Club. South south side of East Country Club from the 800 to 1,000 block.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion to approve zoning case 23 dash 006 F-Plat for Goddard Ridge Estate subdivision. Second.
We have a motion by Council Lady Arnold. The second by Council Lady Halverson. Okay, is there discussion?
I can't approve.
Either.
We don't have a presentation.
You want to, yeah, we ought to have a presentation, go ahead.
You gotta do something for 28 more minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is the council. We have a final plat approval here, it's for 18 lots for 18 individual townhomes. This approximately at a corner from Goddard High School there. They passed with planning and zoning with the motion five to zero, we're just here to get a final approval so we can help Mr. Shackleford move forward with development. Two stars there, the lots we're looking at that were down across there. That's great info. That's what the plot looks like. Individual lots, 18 lots each with their own townhome, you can see access around the, within the property, so there's not as much congestion approaching Country Club.
Is it gonna be gated?
No.
The driveway's in in the front or the?
In the front. We have we have access in the front, we have the garages in the back along with the dumpsters which were approved by Solid Waste.
Mayor and council, as you're aware, we cannot have on collector road or arterial road, you cannot have direct access from your house. So what this development is doing, you're having 18 townhomes, what I'm gonna call them, they're gonna have two driveways. One on the west side, one on the east side, so they'll have their own access road for visitors up on on the, on the north side of their lot. They'll have their rear garages and, and carports in the rear, trash pickup will be in the rear. You can go down to the colored one. Okay. As you can see with that right here, this is the property, these are the baseball and softball fields. This property here is actually part of the mobile home park. And then here is the pork claires, part of the pork claires. An interesting thing, since we're trying to burn some time, councilor. Interesting thing, if you look at the zoning map, this is where we're at here, R3, so the townhomes will fit it perfectly. You have mobile home behind it, of course you have the pork claires that don't want anything around there, you have institutional, you have industrial. But this little empty parcel right here? That's RS, by definition, that's one house for two and a half acres. And, or we could put agriculture, or cemetery, mausoleums, all that kind of stuff. I see a future zone change here, just with surrounding properties. From an engineering point of view, they followed everything with access. And as far as planning and planning zoning, that's a good transitional from what we have at the mobile home parks. The industrial, I mean, the institutional around there. And from an engineer perspective, city engineer approves and recommends the subdivision.
Thank you.
We had council. Council, you were first, and then Ms. Moore.
What do we have for drainage and retention, because when you're putting that many that close together, we already have a flood issue.
Go back to the class. We have Todd Wagner, the engineer. And he'll, he does have detention ponds and stuff, but I'll let him.
There is, okay, that's why I couldn't see from.
There, there's a detention ditch basically on the, between Country Club and units on the north and another one on the south.
I only made six.
Detention pond on the, detention pond on the east. And it's his size. Care of flooding for that.
Died for a 100-year event.
Okay, I can see, see it in here. I just remembered, I mean, with what we've had with Holly Loop and what we had right there, this is and this is really close together and with all the scene you're talking about, I assume the driveways and the extra roads are gonna be all seen. You're gonna have this runoff.
All the water runs off into, into a reflection ditch on the north or the south. And then it comes down and, and flows into the pond and then it, there's a pipe into the inlet, but there's also an overflow if it really gets bad to go out in the Country Club. But the amount of water that will come off in a 10-year storm is less than what come off now.
Alright.
Hey, Councilor Moore?
You go back to where the little star is, well, that one, okay, see this little one by the baseball field, how close is that? Why does that look like?
Right next door to the baseball field, it's a button right next to it.
That doesn't belong to the school or whoever owns the field there?
No, ma'am.
Do they have the other one next to it? Is there a parking lot right next to that, to the, whatever houses right there is gonna be next to the?
Okay, you can see it better in the color right here? That's the schools, the blue.
That just seems really close to that parking lot, right? If they want to put their house?
That's what insurance is for.
Right, I guess so. They're not professional players over there.
The ball fields, you know, the outfield is up against the, the north and the east on that side. The parking lot is directly west, so they'll have, they, they have to hit, you know,
Real good.
There's 50 or 60 feet
Okay.
from the ball field to the six-foot fence, so if there's a ball coming over, we got somebody to be going something.
Alright, it just looks real close.
There's a soccer field up here.
Behind them.
Right here.
Right there.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So sanitation is gonna have to go behind, emergency vehicles are gonna have to go behind.
Everything's been reviewed by sanitation, everything's been reviewed?
And sanitation says there's enough room for them to get their.
Affirmative, they'll be using the 300 gallon.
And our department is approved, if they can get any vehicles that they have, they're there as well.
We have Jared over here.
Hi, guys, Jared.
Our department has it ready.
Mayor?
Councilor?
What's timeframe on, on breaking ground?
I, you know, I've been asked that every time I've done a plat and the same answer is, I think they're gonna start right away. But I think they're really gonna start right away, because they're anxious.
Someone's fairly, really serious about that.
Yeah.
Well, it's the Shacklefords and they do construction, so they do have a history of subdivision.
That's just important, we've done things like this before and then land just sit there for years. That's good to hear.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this is a pie in the sky and, you know, the interest rates and the construction costs haven't, you know, they didn't start this until after the big balloon of the inflation, so I think they're really ready to go.
Okay.
The other thing, Councilor Perry, is they bought this second star, they bought that parcel from the mobile home park. So if you bought some real estate, then you need to start making money to pay, start paying your, your expenses.
They bought both parcels.
Okay.
What, why do we have, I've had duplexes and stuff before, but these are like five or six houses in a, or things right together, they all have five or six with common walls, five or six buildings?
Town.
There's, the, the best place you can see that is get to the meadows down on, oh, and Sunset down in there, and they built you know, back in the 80s, they built several units that were like that and and in the last 10 years, two or three units that are four-unit apartments or four-unit buildings have, have been built down in there and they've, like, immediately been occupied. And Jim Campbell did 16 units up on Richardson and Orlando and he's filled up as soon as he can finish.
Mayor, they will have the firewalls and meet the spec that have the individual units. They do have the specs for the firewalls and all that.
Have sprinklers or anything?
They're not that big.
And, okay, so and then what about the trash cans, when you talk about 300-gallon cans, every time you drive by a place with 300-gallon cans, it's an apartment complex? It's a mess. I mean, you, you go by any of them down Sunset? And you look how many of them have those 300-gallon cans and there's stuff, there's couches, there's everything else hanging out all over there and you know, there's no, are these gonna be in a fenced area where you have all these cans?
They'll be in the property, they'll be behind the structures. And then on the south end of the property, there's the ditch, so it won't be, it'll be within their property. The other thing is, they are higher-end properties. I wouldn't expect the same kind of nuisance problems that we would have in other apartment complexes.
And, and we're building a concrete pad for each one of the dumpsters to set off of the roadways, so.
Mr. Mayor, they also, and these, these are townhomes, correct? What's that?
Should let him finish before you interrupt him.
Thank you, I hate for, I was so rude there, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'm.
No, I appreciate it.
Have a courtesy, you should.
I, I thought he was done.
Oh, he wasn't. Are you true? No? Okay. Yes, sir.
So my question was going to be, these are townhomes, not apartments?
Well, they're, they, they, you know, you can't decide who's gonna buy them or what they're gonna do.
They're singly individual.
They're set for single-family ownership for each lot.
That, that makes a big difference compared to apartments, yeah.
Are there any parks or any structures where there can be basketball goals and places for children to to play in any of this stuff, any kind of, since all they have, everything around them, it doesn't look like there's a lot of grass. Is there any facilities at all for any kind of recreation where kids could play four-square or basketball or a place for them at all, for children?
Not required.
And that's not necessarily true, right across the street is a school and then right across the street from it is a city park, they're closer to a city park.
Development is not required for their development.
Right.
Yeah, but most schools have fences and stuff around them now, so you can't
Not the city.
the kids can't get in to use. And that's why I said, I mean, if you end up having, if these are single-family units, there ought to be some facilities somewhere out there for basketball goal or kids to do something other than playing basketball in the streets out there around the facility.
Each unit has four, has two 20-by-20 parking areas for each unit, two in the front and two in the back that are off of the roadways. So the basketball goals will, you know, when somebody wants one, they'll put one up on either side of their driveway and they can either do it in the front or the back, and so there's plenty of room for basketballs and throwing balls and that sort of stuff.
Is there any assurance that homeowners will allow them, homeowners association?
As, as far as I know, in the restrictive covenants, there's no, there's no restriction to that.
But as far as I know, it's not a way of saying there isn't.
I, I haven't, I, you know, when I talked to Philip Shackleford, he, he had the family emergency and couldn't be here, so I can't speak for him, but I haven't seen the, the restrictive covenants, but he did not indicate he wanted anything like that. What we were worried about is how do we maintain the roadway and how do we maintain ditches and the landscaping and, and that sort of stuff.
And these roads, are they built to city code or they belong to the?
They belong to.
To the owner of the house?
They belong to, there would be a homeowners association to take care of all that concrete and the drainage and everything basically outside of the house itself.
It's all outside the city roadway, it's all private, private.
Well, I, I just, when you look about this and you're doing single-family homes, to me, there ought to be some places for swings. There ought to be some places for a seesaw, you know, whatever, and a basketball court or something. There ought to be something there for small children to do. And small or anybody, you know, I just, you know, I know, yes, they can all walk across the street, but people who live in this subdivision aren't gonna send their kids across Country Club all by themselves. And I think if, if we're looking about developing a city in an area with 18 houses in it or whatever, there ought to be some area for a place for children to play somewhere. Yes.
So where I live, in my neighborhood, there's no playgrounds. So I don't look at this any different myself, if I'm gonna go to the playground, it's about a mile away, Square Park or, it's not even that far, for Triangle Park. So if my kids want to play in the driveway, they can play in the driveway, and I don't see any difference in them being able to play in the driveway. I think we need more houses, I think these are very nice townhomes, and I don't think we're gonna have any trouble with the trash, like you said, of the entire end homes. I see these HOA, they're required by certain covenant rules to keep it looking nice, that's what the HOA is for, so. As for the kids playing, I don't see this development any different than any other neighborhood in town. It's a regular home.
Well, I, you know, I think our 800 lot thing didn't have any places for kids to play either.
Still, Norde's just, I don't know how far, a couple blocks away.
A couple blocks.
Yeah, and they've got a nice playground and everything, so, and it can't hurt people to go walk, you know? We get them out.
All I can say is that everything is developed to our current ordinances and subdivisions, and that's the only thing we can hold them to.
They are gonna have little yards, like.
There's, there's a yard area in the front and in the rear in addition to the parking areas.
So, you know, we were told that about the 800 units, but there's not any place for kids really to play there, they can go to a long way to a park. And I think, I just think there ought to be places for children to have some, a swing set or something to do something outside. And, and I don't, I think when you look at that many units, it doesn't, I'm not saying you gotta have one at every, in everything, but somewhere in there, there ought to be a place, in my opinion, for kids to have something.
Upper units, mayor, upper units, mayor, typically what I would say are for retirees and professionals.
Thanks.
This isn't R3, so R3 has a little bit different perspective. I appreciate what you're saying about, about the recreational facilities, but if we want to build those, then we should definitely build in our ordinance and subdivision. So then it's, everybody will develop to that standard.
Well, we have ordinances for alleys and things like that and ordinances, and we didn't follow that either, did we? You know, I mean, all I'm saying is that in looking, when you have ordinances, you know, people need to follow them, what the ordinances say. And I'm, this might all work fine, and it's all for senior citizens, but why are we putting, why are we having the senior citizens building a senior citizen center right next to a high school? I mean, to me, that, you know, if that's what, if that's what you're saying, that this is all for that, I'm just saying, you know, there's you know, maybe you could be a little further away or something closer to a grocery store or something for a senior citizens thing. I'm just looking at this and saying, you know, let's, let's look about where we are that makes something that has some areas around there, maybe senior citizens have their grandkids come. You know, I mean, that's all places where people could go and do a little thing, but that's just how I see it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner? On the, I, I side this up, are those breaks in between?
Yes, there's.
How wide are those breaks?
They're five foot on each side of the lot.
Fire. Let's see square footage of these units, they've got a two-bedroom and three-bedroom units?
There are 12 and 1400, I believe. Thank you. Everyone's important, and the interior ones.
I see.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Okay, we have a motion by Council Lady Arnold, second by Council Lady Halverson to approve zoning case number 23 dash 006. Final plat for the Goddard Ridge Estate subdivision. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the clerk, call the roll.
Councilor Perry?
Aye.
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Councilor Haldenbrand?
Aye.
Councilor Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilor Arnold?
Yes.
Councilor Best?
Yes.
Councilor Halverson?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Corn?
Yes.
Councilor Oropesa?
Yes.
Motion passed and sent to zero.
Okay. Thank you, let's see. Okay.
No further action items here.
We'll adjourn this meeting, okay, the next.
This conference will now be recorded.
Hey, we'll call this meeting to order, have a roll call, please.
Councilor Haldenbrand?
Nope.
Councilor Moore?
Here.
Councilor Best? Councilor Perry?
Here, present.
Councilor Halverson?
Here.
Councilor Sanchez?
Sanchez.
Councilor Oropesa?
Here.
Councilor Arnold?
Here.
Councilor Foster?
Present.
Councilor Corn?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum eight to two.
Okay. It was eight, we're missing, and, and, okay. Okay, well, okay. Which two would you like to be there, Mr. Fuller, would you like to be Fuller today or Jared, or which one would you like?
I prefer to be Mr. Fuller, yeah.
That's okay, Mr. Fuller.
If you're really not good at impersonating people, so.
Alright, well, would you please go ahead?
Yeah, so, mayor, members of the council, we're here today just to offer some, some good insight as to what we can offer through the Raula Fire Department, terms of ambulance operations, there's some confusion, and so we're here just informative. I'm not here to pitch, I'm not here to sell, I'm here just to give the facts as I know them and what I believe to be true of the Raula Fire Department and what we're capable of, you guys don't really know me, so I'll introduce myself, I'll introduce Keith Bunch. We'll go over some facts, kind of how the system currently runs, just explain what this would look like from our viewpoint. In your packets, there's some numbers, those numbers, I've included some of those big numbers in the slides, so if you don't want to look over the spreadsheets, the big numbers are in the slides, the spreadsheets are definitely there for your reference as well, and I'm happy to talk about any of it, anything that you would like to to talk about, as of today, the numbers are the most accurate we can get them. Price of everything changes, especially in medicine, and so they change every single day, and there's a lot of factors running an ambulance in terms of, it could change every minute, and so they're the best that I could come up with to this point, so. You can. So a little bit about the Raula Fire Department, I put our mission statement up here, this, this is how we respond currently, this is our belief of how we are to respond, so our primary mission of the Raula Fire Department is to provide a range of programs designed to protect the lives and property of the inhabitants of the city of Raula from adverse effects of fires, sudden medical emergencies, or exposure to dangerous conditions created by either man or nature, so. Currently, we are EMS certified, we do the exact same thing. The only thing that we're currently not doing is putting patients in Raula, city of Raula ambulances and transporting to the hospital. We're trained to the same level, we have about 12 to 14 paramedics that are currently staffed with us, that are trained to the same level. Majority of us all went to the exact same school, we have advanced EMT or EMT intermediates, just like the ambulance does, and we have EMT basics. Everyone on the fire department is trained in EMS, and so operations of ambulance falls straight into our mission statement, we're not recreating anything, it's just an absorption, it's just going to be an absorption for us. A little bit, a little bit about, a little bit, I'm gonna, please hear me, I want you guys to know who I am and what I'm capable of. Some of my qualifications and what I, what I can bring to the table, as well as Randy, so I say this in a humble manner, but in a way that I want you guys to know who I am and, so you guys can trust. So my name is David Fuller, I'm the deputy fire chief, I have 16 years of fire service altogether, I spent some time on volunteer fire south of town, my family still runs and operates that. So I come from a lineage of firefighters, 11 years as a paramedic, I have a bachelor's of emergency management from Eastern New Mexico University at Peralas, and Arizona State University, my master's in public safety leadership administration, I graduated with a 4.0. I did a 24-month program in 11 months. Having to have a mind and an ability to adapt, innovative, and to think and to push forward with, with good progress. Randy Bunch is our EMS division chief, 18 years of experience as a paramedic, 22 years of experience in emergency services, and he spent 10 years doing ambulance operations, so he, not only did he work for private ambulance, Randy then quit private ambulance, he joined the Raula Fire Department, back when Randy started, our firemen helped staff the ambulance, and so Randy joined the fire department and then got stuck on an ambulance, and so he has years' experience running it as a fireman, as a single fireman on the ambulance, and he has years working, working private as well, so. So, just a little background, so he needs for service, so the city is the owner of the certificate of necessity, so by state law, we have the legal obligation to provide transit, an ambulance service of some sort, so forever, we've always been RFP for the ambulance, we've always had a third party come in, a contractor come in and provide that service for us. You guys, I know, for the most part, many of you have been a part of the process numerous times. This goes back to when Mr. Matthews was, was involved in the fire department, they went to RFP and we've just continued to do it for all these years. The process is normally a two-year process. Most of the time, it is, it's two years, and then at the end of the two years, we have the opportunity to renew that up to, for two more years. And so most of the time, we can get someone in-house for, for years. This time, we, with some circumstances, we had a, we had a re-go to RFP after a two-year period, we didn't get the chance to up it to four years, so. Can we continue? Some pros and cons, some pros and cons of what, what this may look like, it may look like the fire department running it, some pros and some cons, so I try to be honest and come up with, with both sides. I want you guys to be as educated as we can, you guys, both sides of the street here. So, the pros, we'll be in control of our own destiny, we won't be in the current situation where we're in right now, where everything's hunky-dory, and then there's a 1500, 9% increase at the drop of a pin, that, that won't be the case ever again. We will control it, we'll know it, we know what's coming, we, with no more RFPs, no more third-party contractors coming saying, oh, we want more money, oh, we can't do it for this, oh, we need to cut service, oh, we need to do this, so we're in control of our own destiny. Second bullet goes along, just along with that, we have full control of the EMS system, so as it currently sits, we have a really good EMS system, we don't have problems, we're working really well with AMR, but again, at the drop of a hat, they could choose not to follow all the exact details, or they are a contractor, and they get to make a decision, if they say, oh, we don't want those medications, they don't have to carry them, and we can't force them to do it, and so we get full control of the EMS system at this point, we're in control, we get to dictate personnel, we get to dictate exactly what we do, just gives us a little bit more security, and the ability to make sure the standard of care is the same. We have a great support for medical direction, Dr. Tom Wolf is our medical director, he has voiced for many years, before I took over as the deputy chief, I was the EMS chief before that, even before that, Chief Mann was EMS chief, and since Chief Mann was in office, 2015, 2016, Dr. Tom Wolf has wanted us to go this direction, he has voiced his full support, and is going in this direction, he understands that there's finances involved, and it can be expensive to do so, but we do have his, his full support. Money generated will stay within the system, I mean, our talks, the tax obviously reimbursed it back into the city, back into our employees, it's not going to a third party elsewhere, so last time, it would go to Albuquerque, Albuquerque would get, they would, that's where the majority of the money went, now it goes to AMR, which, then it goes to GMR, and so it goes corporate, doesn't stay, it doesn't, a lot of that doesn't get to stay within the community, grows our organization, grows fire department operations, city operations, and hopefully, we're gonna attract some qualified personnel, I talked to, specifically, I talked to some people who are very interested in working for the Raula Fire Department, they're currently working for other agencies that run the ambulance, they just, they love the ambulance as well, and so they would want to see us take over both, and they are very much interested, and I know one particular that lives in this community, he lives in Roswell, but commutes back and forth to Hotlins because they run the ambulance, and so it would hopefully attract more people along those lines to, to stay and work here now. Some of the cons, along with the, along with the same, let's get right to the third bullet point on this, and we'll backtrack a little bit, along with that, we're gonna have to hire more people, and hiring people is very difficult, finding people to work is very difficult, so a pro can also be our con in this case, and, and that, that is going to prove probably a struggle, or a hurdle that we're gonna have to get over. Costs, price is only going up, the costs of our, costs of running an ambulance cost, running a business currently, it doesn't matter what we're doing, the cost is only going up, salaries are going up, cost of materials are going up, cost of equipment are going up, you name it, the cost is, is only rising, especially the, the better service we find, the more expensive it's gonna be. We can, we can choose to build an ambulance service that is, is, is middle of the road, and it may save us a little bit of money, but my thought is, I, I believe that our, our taxpayers deserve this level, and to get to this level, it's gonna cost, it's gonna cost money, and so we want to provide this level, it costs us a little bit more to do so. Our fleet maintenance costs will go up throughout the fire department, it's because we're operating eight ambulances, of course, building maintenance will go up too, there's more people living, living in our facilities, so. Here's our operations plan, as it, as it currently sits, we've thought about a lot of this, we've tried to figure a lot of this out, four 911 ambulances out of three stations, will cover the, the bulk of all 911 services, every now and again, we do get into a place where we have to go and overload, and that's the same as it is now, there are times that we go and overload, and we need to staff a backup unit, well, no, nothing changes here, we're gonna run them out of station one, three, and five, you'll have one down south, one up north, two, two central, it's easier to get north and south from central, central's always busiest through the downtown area, and so you put two down here, one up north and one up south, one down south, call it good, and we have other facilities to operate in our facility transports, so we have other housing locations where we can keep units and keep them based, where we don't have to necessarily release out other buildings, we have infrastructure in place that we can house our additional personnel. So, four paramedic units, two ALS units, and then one to two variant teams, depending on long distance transport, whatever need, we can staff those as needed, so paramedics and ALS are two different things, paramedic, of course, is the highest level that you can get in EMS, ALS is advanced life support, and advanced EMT or EMT intermediate can provide that same level of care. AMR currently has EMTs who are now trained in cardiac monitoring, and can give medications that normally only paramedics can give, and so that really steps up that ALS, those ALS units to provide still the exact same level of care, just at a cheaper cost to the city, so I'll explain in just one second, we'll talk about kind of the difference, kind of, we'll get into the weeds in it on this next slide, I believe. So, currently, a while back, the body voted and approved funding for PVRCC to adopt Pro-QA Priority Dispatch, this was something that Ms. Terry really pressed, and she, she worked really hard on, and has been an amazing benefit to our emergency system, so all Pro-QA does is, especially for, for the fire department side, fire and EMS, it allows us to allocate resources on appropriate calls, so you call 911, you're gonna talk to an operator, that operator's gonna ask you a series of questions, in a series of order, and are not gonna deviate from that, and as you answer these questions in that order, it categorizes the call, it categorizes always from what they call an omega call, which is like a, really like a nothing call, like a wellness check, and it's gonna go all the way up to an echo, so we, level E, an echo call, echoes are serious, and so however you answer this, it's gonna start, there's little markers within that program that dictate where we fall, so Pro-QA, you call, you have chest pain, you're getting a delta, it's, it's gonna be a delta, more than likely, a delta call, so you're getting now, and right now, you're getting a fire engine and an ambulance, because chest, chest pain, heart attack, we're worried about facing strokes, major crashes, so those deltas, echoes are getting those, whereas if we have, when we even start running this, and we look at it, and those ALS units that are highly-trained, middle-of-the-road EMTs that have the advanced cardiac life support style training, they can do cardiac monitoring, and they can do special drugs, they can be responding on the bravos and the charlies, we don't have to waste resources that could be allocated on other types of calls, and so we're able to really structure this, the Pro-QA is a system that Albuquerque Fire uses, and they use it very, very well. It's new to us, and we're still, we're still going through the ebbs and flows of what that looks like, and, and learning from it as we go, but as we, as we, if we work towards this direction, it's only gonna get stronger and make our, our system stronger. The operation of this can be structured in many ways, as you, you could probably imagine, there's a lot of ways to structure a regular business, there's a lot of ways to structure this, none of them are really wrong, some might cost a little bit more, some will cost a little bit less, some might, you need more people, some, some you don't, so, so it just depends on, on where we decide, we've decided, as I, as I built some of this out, we want a strong system, we want a, a, a system that provides the best level of care for our patients, we want nice ambulances, we want, we want our taxpayers, our constituents to have the best level of care, that if we take them to the hospital, they're gonna look back on this experience and say, you know what, I was, I was scared to death, but I had full trust, they, they brought a lot of peace to my heart and to my mind in that, in that situation, that's, that's our goal, and that's what we strive to do, so, several ways to build this, the way we have it structured here, very, very, very similar to the way we're currently running operations in this town, we're not deviating from that, just, just transforming hands, so. Talk about units real quick, so, we're about to get to the costs, some details on the costs, this is a big factor, and so, a lot, a lot of people don't understand another, you get an, you have a fire truck, so you have a ladder truck, you have an engine, you have a brush truck, so there's three different really types of equipment that you could have, ambulances are the exact same, there are three different types of units that we can, we can obtain, so a type one is a pickup chassis with a, with a big box, big pickup chassis, big box, some normally F50, a Chevrolet, a 5500, a Dodge 5500, big, big, strong chassis, and big, big boxes on the back, these are fantastic for working major traumas, for cardiac arrests, for a lot of situations where it gives us more space in the back to take care of critical, critically ill patients or trauma patients. A type two is a van-style ambulance, think of a Ford Sprinter van, we call them van-ulences in the service, it's what Superior used to use, it's, it's a van, and it's a van all the way through, it does not have a boxy frame on the back, it's just a van, very small, they're great, a lot of communities will use it for long-distance transfers out of town, because they're not necessarily working critical patients, and a little bit of air gun, gas mileage, not so great for running 911, that was not a lot of room, and you get a level one trauma on these things, we're working a critical patient, we run out of room very, very quickly. A type three is a van chassis with a big box, so a type three is basically a combination of type one and two, has a van chassis, the units we just got donated two, couple years ago, and just recently from Carl's Datter type threes, so has a van chassis and a big box on the back, you get a big box, Topper on some of these, a lot of communities are, are leaving these, really for the sole fact that the pickup frame is more sturdy, and if we're taking them down dirt roads, or wherever it may be, they last longer, the pickups last longer, and then they're able to, to do some, instead of buying a new unit, they take a, a brand, put a brand-new box, or the, the used box and brand-new chassis, saves them money when they're purchasing units, so they'll just reuse the box, which stays in good shape for a very long time, just put on a brand-new set of wheels, and they're able to go that way, so, under the current plan that I have structured, in order for us to make sure that our, our constituents are getting the best level of care we have for purchasing one unit every, every year. Does it get a question?
I just, on your, when you say your pickup, type chassis, what's that, a Ford 450?
550, they're normally F50s, you can get them on a Dodge chassis, and on a Chevy chassis as well, I, I'm just, I'm guessing, or whatever, I'm a Ford guy, but the Ford tends to hold better up, those 550s hold up a little bit better on the front.
They're four-wheel drive and?
Four-wheel drive, big, big empty box units, fantastic units, Dexter has, Dexter has these, Artisia has these, Lovington has type ones, Carl's Datter only has type ones now, they got rid of all their van chassis, and they're all seeing the benefit of these, these things just hold up over time, they, they're just very durable.
Two hundred miles a mile on, is that fair?
Uh, you, you'll probably get, you could probably get easily 150 to 200 thousand miles out of that. I know the van-ulences will last quite a long time, they, they take a beating, the type threes with the van chassis in the box will still last you the same, you may start having to do some suspension overhauls and, and set stuff like that, whereas on that pickup chassis, it's just, you're gonna have a longer endurance before you have to do some of those major repairs.
And can you go from the cab to the back?
Not, no, no longer go from cab to back anymore, they don't, some of them on the vans, the van-ulences, the type threes, not the type two, type threes, it has a little window, but there's no more, there's no really crawl space anymore, and if you really get a really good type one, they're getting away from, you could probably expect it, but they're really getting away from an opening right there, especially with technology, they don't have a monitor, and a camera, and microphones, you can still communicate and talk, but there's no, there's no cross, so. So, we, I did some cost analysis on this, you'll see in, in the papers that I handed out, I'll put the big numbers in here as well, of course, for some of your largest costs, and our largest cost on any project, our retirement, this will give hopefully more employees opportunity to have a pension and have a retirement plan, and then healthcare is expensive as well, and depending on how we want to structure our operations, lots of ways to structure this, the costs can increase as well. 4896, let me give you some, some legal, some legal terms of 4896, so for echo, let's say 7K exemption, they'll qualify for a 25-year retirement instead of the 30, they're on the same plan the fire department is, so the cost goes up in terms of what we pay into para, but you don't have, if you're running 14-hour shifts, you're adding more people that you have to come fill seats all the time, and so you're, if you come down to these ones, you're adding the amount of people you have to hire, you stick with these, you can stick with less people, 7K exemption, our department is 7K exempt, so we don't earn overtime after, until 100, 106 hours, and so anything after 106 hours is overtime, you have to have some qualifications in fire to be able to meet that, and rescue to be able to meet that, if we don't, we have 7K exemption, 4896 is gonna get real costly real quick, because now they earn overtime after 40 hours a week, or 80 hours every two weeks, so that becomes incredibly expensive, so it really is, we're tweaking these numbers, figuring out where we want people to fall, figuring out the training, putting it on us to figure out how do we get our new on, the oncoming EMS to be fire and rescue certified to a degree, so they can qualify for the 7K exemption, so they don't have to be structural firefighters, that's the, that's the good part, they do not have to be structural firefighters, they just have to be trained in fire, so we can train them in a wide variety of things, and with the help of PaaS, we'll make sure all of that is, is kosher, and if not, we won't, we'll figure it out as we talk, so, but lots, lots of ways here that we can structure that. The way I have it structured in the numbers is the way I believe we can make it happen, and they're all under the 7K exemption, and it's on the 4896 schedule, so it's identical schedule as the fire department is.
25-year retirement?
As a, this will put them at 25-year retirement, this will put them at a 30, this isn't, basically, this would, does not give them any benefit for working for the fire agency, this gives them the fire retirement, put them in the municipal five, fire plan, gives them the 25-year retirement, does up the cost for the city, because we're paying, the city will then pay a little bit more percentage into that pension plan, and they will as well, but at least give them a 25-year retirement, and then, there's a 25-year retirement, and then there's a retirement, years of service plus age equals 75 or 80, so that gets them the best, that gets them the best retirement, and then things after that start adding costs as well, so, just, again, more than one way to skin a cat, more than one way to build this successfully. It's kind of how we go, out, cost analysis on what we have as it currently is built, 30 additional employees for the Raula Fire Department, three paramedic supervisors, four paramedics, eight advanced EMTs, seven EMT basics, the good thing is, is we can hire, I think the ultimate goal, we, we want the highest train, the best level of care we can get, so if we can get rid of seven EMT basics and have 15 regular EMTs, that was, or advanced EMTs, that's absolutely what we want, I, it'd be amazing one day if we have 30 paramedics running, usually running double paramedic trucks, however, qualified people, pay, it's gonna, it, I don't know if we'll ever get there, but it's good to the dream, so, 30 extra people, here's just a simple cost analysis and breakdown, this, these numbers do include their benefits, you'll see in there, I talked to, I talked to Jamie when I built these numbers, on the cost side, that includes all their para, all their healthcare, everything is included to the, even to the percentage of what they're paying into retiree healthcare, and the taxes and certain things, so that's all, that's all the cost that the city would incur, so 2.79 just for personnel alone, and that is under the 7K exemption, that's under what the fire department currently.
How many do you have, how many EMTs do you have now?
We, currently, paramedic-wise, we're, we're sitting at 12 to 14, we got two more guys who are signed up for the test, and they're gonna be going to Lovick soon to take that written exam, and hopefully, they, we'll have those two additional.
So, you're just gonna be 30 more on top of this 12?
We need 30, to run this effectively, and this is just, this is my honest opinion, to run this effectively, we have to bring on more people, if you run this out of the fire department the way it currently, it currently sits, it, it won't work, it's not worth it, it's gonna hit our ISO, it's gonna increase tax rates, it's gonna spread the fire department thin, and resource allocation, and providing the best level of service for our citizens, I'm just not, it's not, it's not a good plan, so we'll need to bring on the additional, still, yeah, we need additional 30 people to be able, to be able to run this effectively. Just some more simple costs, apparatus, 215, approximately $215,000 a year over five years, it depends again on what unit we want, we can save costs and go with type three, we can go, we can go top level, and they're more expensive, but we get what we want from the beginning, and our citizens never, they'll never know, and so we, we get the best of the best, all that, it just depends on where we want to take it. Radios, as it currently sits, $71,000 for all of them, miscellaneous supplies to get $260,000 really for startup, our field insurance, $180,000, medical direction, currently, we're paying $7250, I believe, $7520, we then incur all of the medical direction for the city of Roswell currently, AMR does pay a little bit of that, since it's a transporting agency, we will then just incur all of the costs, and so our cost goes from $7,000 to $20,000 approximately. Monitors, and monitors and gurneys, so the gurneys are included in this, it's $150,000 over five years, we chose a five-year payment on that, because after five years, just like a cell phone, technology is completely dated, cardiac monitors are the same way, we want the best of the best. Cardiac monitors are the same way. We want the best of the best, especially if we're looking at the details of a heartbeat. On a monitor and being able to tell. Do we give this medication or do we give this medication? And truly in a moment of life and death, we want the best. And so every five years, we're placing with a top level. Of, of monitor billing, 7% of the collected revenue from an outside party. I chose 7%. That's the highest I could find charge wise. Hob stays 3.8%. So I've built, I've built most of our stuff on that. 7% is, we're gonna, we're gonna go worst case scenario. So. We do not want a bill in house. Think it's a bad idea. And I've talked to Carlsbad and I've talked to these other, Portales builds in house, but the lady that builds in house has been doing it for 29 years. Which is really good at it. Carlsbad says, don't. Just send it out, let them collect on it. You get more, you get more collection. And it's a whole lot less headache on you. And so we built the whole program on, on house billing. Lots of companies that we can use. We have a lot of connections with Carlsbad and Artesia and Transera, Medevac. We're not going to have an issue finding a billings. So. So cost, to start operations, it's, it's 4.032. To include all, all staff and so forth. And again, it's going to depend on. It's going to vary depending on collection rate. If we are collecting 50%, our collection cost is going to be up before the, the cost will be up, but that, that will offset definitely to have way more revenue. Because of that.
Is that five units of the trucks?
So I had, that is, that was, that number was built off six units total.
Of the trucks?
Six, six units. Cause we have two used that we can use for backup and in city stuff. The, we would get four new ones. Those brand new ones would be our main. Those are the 911. We're going now, brand new units. And then, so that puts, that puts us at six and we wanted eight total. And so the two long distance transfers. Which I, I pressed out as the ambulances as type twos. So they're seen way cheaper, way, way cheaper. And so. For those to be a little safer on the road, they're not big and boxy and slant, a little more streamlined. They can take patients from here to Los Cruces, you know. El Paso, Lubbock, Albuquerque, wherever we're taking them. So. That's, that's, there's your rough ballpark on that. So revenues again, depending on, depending on where we're at. Depending on, there's so much of the costs, the revenue side. I, I hope we make no money because I don't want to take people to the hospital. I hope they don't get sick. But we know that's not the case. And so we don't know how many people are going to call 911. And so we've done this based off average call numbers. And if you look in your packets, after, really after year one, it's just a percentage increase what we may predict for the next year. It's very hard to predict what it would be. I took the numbers that we've, we've seen an increase of about 1.5% call volume over the last. Four years. So every year it increases by 1.1.5%. And that's how I did the math on this. So revenue is 4.027. And this, again, this ranges from everything. It, it's going to vary. It could be, oh, Medicare changed the law. They're going to pay more. Or Medicare changed the law. They're going to pay less or they're not going to pay at all. Or. You may have a different mix of taxpayers, a different mix of. You have Medicaid, Medicare or private maybe, maybe some of the Medicaid, Medicare. Windows and percentages. And we have a higher percentage of, of regular insurance in the town. And so all, there are so many variables on, on the billing side of this and what it looks like. The number can easily go up. It can very easily go down. And just, it just depends on, on really truly a lot of variables.
Is that on a 100%, 100% collect?
No, this is built on like 40% collection. Okay. 40%. So 40% might be a little bit on the low side. So I built these numbers on a 40% collection. On us transporting only 75% of our patients. So I'm saying one out of every four people we run on are going to say, I don't want to go to the hospital. Some days that's true. There's one out of every four going to say, oh, we're going to refuse service. Some days, no one's going to refuse. We're going to take everybody. And so it's, it's very dependent on, again, the day, day of the week, season of the month. Who's hurt? Are they really hurt? Are they not hurt? So forth. So this is built on a 40%. And in your packet, you're going to notice I have a 40% bill, I have a 50% bill and I have 75% bill. 75 is pretty much unattainable. We'd love to dream that we would collect that much, but. The standard is pretty close to that 50% mark. Anywhere between 47 and 53. Given on the month, we're going to fluctuate in that area. So. And I, Kevin, that's true. Is that correct? And then Superior, the ambulance before. 47 to 53, depending on the month, is where we're going to fluctuate. So I built it on that low end. These revenues are based off the tariff increase also. The tariff increase, by state law, we have to bill. No matter what, we run out of patient, we have to bill that patient. We can't say, ah, we're, we're just going to write it off. We, we have to bill, make every attempt to collect funds. So. The way Carlsbad has it structured, they built three times, but they will not send a taxpayer to collection. After the third time, the company restructures the bill. They try it. We have every right to send a collection. It's going to be whatever we want to bill and whatever we want to set up as our system. With y'all's help, it's determined that's what we want to do. So we bill off the state tariff. The state tariff tells us by law, this is, we can charge. The state tariff has not been changed, I believe, in a very long time. 2009, 2011 timeframe. When? Seventeen was the last one. So, which even then, I, I don't think it changed a couple bucks. They don't change it very often. What this is, these numbers are based off of is here recently, a lead medical ambulance. So lead medical out of Eddie County that have operations in Eddie County, O'Carroll County, I believe, and Roosevelt. So they operate at Carlsbad. Down in Los Cruces, on the corridor area sometimes. And then out of Talis, they petition the state. There's a lot of departments that petition the state and they ask for a 30% increase really across the board. And they, they walked right out with it. And so. We have all the paperwork already. I believe AMR is already working on establishing this tariff increase. For countywide for us. And so there's really, we're going to do the exact, use the exact same words, do the exact same thing. There, no reason they should deny that. We're, we're the exact same spot. What seems to happen is they don't want to go and the PRC doesn't want to have this. Make something universal. So they wait for individuals to petition. So. You petition, there are different petitions, different counties throughout the area. A lot of it depends on how rural we are. Roswell's incredibly rural. All of our long distance stuff is very far away. Costs a little lot more money. And so rural, you'll see a little bit higher rates approved. But closer to our metropolitan area, the, the lower the rate would be approved. Rates that we've seen approved across the state span from. Increase of 30% to an increase of 15%. And so with. A tariff increase is pretty much what we're going to shoot for and we're, we're really hoping we get it. Not guaranteed. I mean, I would say no, but past practice on the way they're approving for other people dictate that it, it will be approved. So. All these numbers are based off an increased tariff rate as well. So. I also built in, I also built in on, on your packets, I concluded a paper today. The last page is three years at the current tariff. So the second to last page is a five year plan with the increased tariff rate. The very, the page right after that is three years at the current tariff rates. And so you can see the. You can see the obligation that it takes.
Five pages are not numbered, nothing going off through.
Oh, you're fine. So this is the last. And this is.
Explain to me what it is.
So this is, so, and they're labeled at the top. One says five year projection with, with the tariff increase. The other one is a three year projection. Without a tariff increase. One has three columns and the other one has, has five. And the one is check as the box that are, are in this one. So this is just the cost benefit analysis and this, this includes the tariff increase. This is the only paper. That does not include, this is the current tariff rate. The one with three columns is the current tariff rate. We have very, I mean, we have a very, very strong belief that a tariff increase and I, I, and I speak for the current system now. We are going to get, we will get a tariff increase. We will get a tariff increase. So we can, we can continue. Here's your five year projection. Based off with the tariff increase, 40% collection, 50% collection. As we go, new ambulance every year, new equipment every year. That's a question?
Yeah, I just, when you, when you talk about your tariff, there, unless they've changed it, there was something in there. Did you had to go 16 miles before? Medicaid would pay?
And I believe, I believe that's a, that is, that's a Medicaid role. Not everyone's Medicaid, Medicare role. So.
Is that loaded mile from the time where you pick them up to the hospital?
Or you only charge for loaded patient miles. You're not charged for empty ambulance.
So Baron Council, so the tariff and the Medicaid collections work kind of independently. So people that get collections on the tariff. That tariff is basically your. Independent pay, private insurance, those kind of things. People follow the Medicare, Medicaid, there's different billing schedules for that. Those are scheduled payments that are happening from the, what they, those negotiated prices off Medicare, Medicaid. That number that you referenced for 16 miles, that's actually that Medicare rate. That Medicare rate, for that, that rate for what that is for BLS transfers, like $229 for that rate of recovery. That includes the first 16 miles. On a state tariff rate, so if you charge for that rate, that basic rate for a state tariff rate is in the neighborhood right now, about $335, $340. And then that starts, that's the first mile. And then every additional loading mile after that. So if a constituent here in town travels to the hospital four miles, you have the initial first mile and then three. That's $12, $15,000. That's what the current state tariff is.
And your deadhead coming home.
Deadhead coming home, yes.
Always, always, always deadhead.
So that, that pulls into those long distance transfers where we go from here to a community 200 miles from here. We transport that patient. They pay, they, they're covered under that 200 miles there and that's all deadhead miles from there.
Always deadhead going home unless there's someone at a big facility that needs transported home, which. I can't rule that out, but not often. Not usually a pickup trip on the way home. Not often.
Well, when we, and when we look at this, is there any, what is the options you have? If we have, I mean, those helicopters. Over miles, we have what, 90 a month or 100 a month or something?
A lot of helicopter transfers out a month. At one point, they're, they're 80 a month. Just on the helicopter, that's a quick fix one.
Yeah. So I, I'm just looking at that. Is there any, I don't know, if all those are hacker, are those auto, all those. Emergency transports or are they just?
No, no, they're not all emergency transports. I mean. We can, there, there is, there is a load that we, we might be able to share. It's in relation to, there was process with the, with Easter. And it's getting our, it's getting our foot in the door for that and being able to support some of the load that they're willing to share. With us. And so. There's a lot of stuff that goes by air that can go by ground.
My only thing for that is it's 65, 65,000 a pop. You sit there and you look and, and what that's doing is, it's. There's somewhere in the middle, there should be a place where we could hire a physician. Orthopedic or somebody else that we don't have to fly a broken leg to Lubbock.
I, I agree completely with that.
I mean, and so I don't know how we work that with Medicaid or Medicare or, or with private insurance. But somewhere, there ought to be some way that we could get. Some assistance on getting doctors to stay here. Somehow. And I, how to figure that out, I don't know, but it, it's. We just transfer, transport so many people at 65,000 a person. It drives the cost of our healthcare insurance here through the roof.
Mr. Baron, $65,000 is probably a cheap flight. That's a very cheap flight. There, there, so I know for a fact there are patients that have been charged $220,000 to fly on the helicopter to Lubbock. And I, but I can't even tell you the drastic difference in price that you would take, pay by ground. And so, yeah, a significant difference. A lot of patients can go by ground. A lot of patients can go by ground.
And, and that's all I'm saying is, is it looking and figuring out. How we can do it now. That's going to be. We're going to do something like that, we're going to have to provide a real premium round ambulance. I mean, to do that, but the opportunity, opportunity there is to save so much money. On the healthcare costs for all our city employees and county employees in, in our whole community. And, you know, it's just, it's. That's one of the leading causes of, of healthy increased costs for us, for, for us and rural New Mexico. Because we're not Albuquerque or Santa Fe or Los Cruces.
I, I agree completely with that. So. I agree.
That's counsel posture.
So our, our initial plan is we're going to have four. Four.
911 units.
How many just regular transport would we be able to, I mean, in the long run?
So in the long run, if we're running eight ambulances, we probably want to keep an additional ambulance back for 911 overloaded case. So honestly, two, pretty much two on this, on the highways. That's what we would love to do. And we can, we can not only hire overtime, a lot of that's pre-approved money and they're going to pay it. So. Staffing wise, we're able to dig a deeper pool of staff for that with off duty firemen or off duty ambulance people to help us run those units. Not as, as often as we need to to keep up with that demand. I know now there are times that you guys are also loaded. You guys don't have a transport unit available. It's just the name of the game and, and we need to look and adapt and as we. Free.
And, and when you're on staffing on, on transport. Do you have, do you need paramedic or most of those just ALS?
Depends on the transport services required. So we have the transport right now that someone's on the. High level of oxygen, not quite a volunteer, but it's under paramedic care. So a paramedic, ALS paramedic has to take that transport. So that paramedic. And other transports are a adolescent site patient, please, you're going to an adolescent psychiatric facility hospital. Usually down in the south of El Paso. And that can be a BLS transport, which is just an EMT basic to pick them up.
So, and I mean, and I know that you can't ballpark it because, I mean, every day is going to be a different day. But, I mean. Do the majority need paramedics or, I mean, it's, it's hard to, I know.
Hard to say. You know, you're right. You can't guess it. I'll just give you the example. This week, Monday. It's like a pretty, it's around here. There was hardly any transports at all. And yesterday there were nine. In the facility, that's things that happen in the facility. That's the non emergency stuff that happened. And as well as the 911 system. So we averaged about 22 calls, 22 transports. For either in for a given facility, you have local, local emergency transport. That can range anywhere from a day that there was no paramedics needed to a day that every single call was a, was a paramedic ALS transport.
And so a facility transport from say the hospital to a nursing home. That's not our 911 doing that, right? That would.
If I, if I have my way, absolutely not. 911 is dedicated to 911. By law, we have to get people to the hospital. We don't have to provide the care from the hospital anywhere else. And we don't, we don't have to provide care from hospital to hospital either. There are companies that, Carlsbad Fire, they only run 911. Carlsbad Fire only runs 911. They have a contractor in town. It's just, it's just an ambulance service that the city pays, they don't pay a stipend to. And. They take all the long distance stuff. And so that's how that company makes money is on long distance. Carlsbad Fire only worries about getting people, the acutely sick and injured to the hospital. And that's what they do. So it could go either way. And so, but 911 should be 911. That, that is our focus. And we need to make sure. We have enough ambulances to take care of the sick and the needy to get them from their home or an accident site or a highway. To care. That, that is our main goal before anything else comes into play. My opinion, my opinion.
Any further comments?
Continue. Yes, sir.
Counselman Perry.
Does the, the time inherent, the, as far as the analysis that you did for the. Employment and the hours and every, any of the benefits and all. Is that including times that the ambulances will have to sit at like Goddard High School for, for sporting events, that kind of thing?
So no, I did not include any of the standbys in this. So that is additional revenue and the revenue. Again, that revenue would be covered in a tariff increase. And it's basically offsetting to cover a volume. It's not 911 stat. It just has to be stacked by an EMT.
Does, does that have a new receipt from that? Does it, is it enough to cover? The true cost?
Yes, yes. And then, and then some, you've probably, you've put a little bit in the bank with that. Yes, sir.
Do you have your spreadsheet where you put all the costs for?
I can, I can, I can get it.
Can you put that up? Spreadsheet that goes from 24. Spreadsheet that goes from twenty-four, twenty-three, three.
I don't know.
Okay, he's reading natural one, I mean.
He wants the cost, is that correct? Yeah, the, the team expansion?
From, from twenty-four to thirty-three.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're for a little not well. H two. Trying to get a handle on operation costs. H two of that.
Line one-ten?
Yeah, I'm looking at line one-ten. Help me through how you get to a million one-four thousand dollars.
That's, that's incorrect, I can't do that, just by looking at it, it's not, it's not, I don't know, I don't have to excel, and so, it may be a misnomer on my part. I probably clicked a button that I didn't need to click, because that, that's.
Because we got equipment costs up front of one million, uh, million three.
One point three-six.
One point three-six. We've got equipment costs right up front, one-three-six-zero.
Personnel costs, too.
It may be, it may be, it may be the finance cost of two-seventy-two instead of.
So, you're saying we'll amortize that over five years?
Yes.
Two-seventy-two.
Yes.
So, I add the two-seventy-two.
And the rest of the line items are three.
The rest of the line items that will get me there. And it's nine-hundred-and-sixty-nine, but you've got down there one million one oh four, you got a subtotal, one million one oh four. I don't know what's your difference between the sub total and your operational costs are.
Is that two-hundred-and-ten?
Two-seventy-two divided by five?
Two-eighty-one. Is the billing cost, the billing, that's the.
That's cost to do the.
That's cost to do the billing, yes, sir.
That's a lot of difference.
Is it the two-ten?
They have a cost, I, it looks like I have a cost difference of one-hundred-and-thirty-five, five forty.
It's one-two-four-seven. I don't know what the operation cost, I can't, can't get to your million one oh four.
Uh, is it the, the two-seventy-two average size over five years? That's fifty-four thousand, so if you, fifty-four, with the nine-six-nine? That's still, that would still, that'd still be over.
The two-seventy-two plus seventy-one plus one-sixty, yeah, those down, I believe that's the nine-sixty-nine. Because he's taking them with class of equipment, amortizing that over a five-year timeframe, say.
You'll just have to open your Excel spreadsheet.
I'll, I'll just have to open the Excel spreadsheet. Now, I can click on the box to exactly what things added up. I'll be a hundred percent on that stuff like that this same, probably for eighty hours. And done a lot of editing in the time, and I made an excellent, click your one around box, and we know how Excel is, you click one, you edit one. Anything you know, you're slightly off somewhere, and so. Yeah, I'm getting a difference of one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-nine. There's a difference of one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-nine.
So, where's your initial, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Counsel Lady Corn, you had your hand up.
She wasn't finished.
The other thing I have a question about is that you've got now, on annual basis, buying new units every year, correct?
That's correct.
One unit.
One unit a year.
One unit a year.
I would think after you bought your initial units, you wouldn't be buying new units or two, would you?
To replace our, the current useless that we have.
That's what you would do that with.
Get, we start getting rid of some of the, the used units.
How many used units will you have?
So, the goal would be to replace, we have two used currently. And then, year, so year two would be replacing one of the used, year three would be replacing one of the used. Year four would be replacing one of the type twos, that get tons of miles going facility to facility, and year five would be.
Well, you got no, you've got no type twos on here, you've got all type ones and threes.
Line ninety, line ninety-five?
Get two at the beginning.
Two at the beginning, so we'll purchase those upright, and then they'll get, those things will accrue so much miles back and forth. Those will be year four, year five replacements.
Do we have those included? Because when I look at your, okay, that, that's the two-hundred-and-ten thousand for those two units.
Yes.
Can't see the numbers on the left.
Okay.
The column numbers.
Okay, I yield to you.
So, so my question is, you said Carlsbad Fire Department only does their nine-one-one calls. The rest of it is contracted out, just your transports are contracted out. Do they have two licenses? Or does that other, other ambulance service have their own license for the transports?
The other ambulance basically will operate out of a statewide P, uh, C O N, Certificate of Necessity license. So, Elite Medical uses the same license number in, and you correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's the way it works, it's the same license number in Carlsbad. It does pretty well, since it does with their transport of patients from El Paso into Mexico or vice versa.
Have you thought in your mind to start with strictly the nine-one-one, and then work our way up to the transport? I know, I know that our VAs have a transport situation for doctor calls and stuff like that, and it's expensive.
Yeah.
Because I sat on that board for a while, but.
Absolutely. I, we're open, we're open to several ideas, and covering nine-one-one for, nine-one-one, nine-one-ones are bread and butter. We're good at transporting nine-one-one patients. We do it right now. It, it's, the learning curve for us is gonna be the inter-facility stuff. And so, it's a bigger financial hit to take, to not take long distance, because it's so much guaranteed money in that long-distance game. And that was the reason behind we say, hey, let's do that as well, because it takes some of that financial burden off the project. But again, as, as the governing body, if we just, if you get, want to decide to do that, we're okay with that as well.
The long distance, the long distance pays for that.
Long distance pays pretty good. Again, if it's Medicaid, Medicare, they may pay a little bit less, but if it's private, they have to have insurance transport. It has to be, it's pre-approved when they transport, so it just helps lessen some of that financial burden. But nine-one-one does not make money at all, at all. Carlsbad, so, so Carlsbad EMS chief used to work here, and so we have a really good working relationship with him. He was a lieutenant here, had every intention of retiring from the Roswell Fire Department. Came open down there, and he applied on a limb. He got the job, he's an excellent EMS chief. Tony Sousa is his name. We miss him dearly here, but he said down there, there are pros and cons to it. And sometimes they, every now and again, they may have to take one, if a lead is not available, if they can't get care to, to take one. They said there's also benefits in not having to worry about the headache of LDTs, and just running the nine-one-one service. And so, pros and cons of both, and one, that's the.
So, it'd be more cost if they could jump in the whole fire and not just.
You, you would make, you'd make more money that way.
Okay.
I, I want to say on the end of one, the very bottom of these pages there are nine-one-one only, you can see kind of what that looks like. Yes.
One thing I'd like to get pointed out here is the global distance transport, we're not gonna make money on this deal. I think we're gonna make money, but it will cut the losses.
Cut the losses, yeah, cut the losses. We're, we're looking, we don't wanna, wanna cost the city a ton of money. We want to provide a good service at whatever the cost is, and we know, and we have full confidence we can do that. Managing the money is also important, so we want to, we want to balance that financial side with it, and we want to be good stewards of what we've been given, so. Yes, sir.
Well, Counsel Lady Moore was.
So, where, on which sheet was your initial financial, whatever, not, not the verdict. Financial startup cost, which sheet was that? That we're, we're looking at the meat of the, the crust of the month. What does it look like, startup twenty-twenty-four, whatever, whatever? Where, where is that at?
It depends, again, depends on a certain cost, anywhere between, it's on one of the sides of the PowerPoint, one, four-point-one-seven.
So, I saw that four-point-one-seven, but I thought that was only, uh, people, only staff.
Four-point-zero-three-two. And it, it can fall on a wide variety, depending on collection rates, depending on certain things. It's gonna be right over that four million dollar.
No, I don't think that was your, your question, was we're gonna have to outweigh.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'll, 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 yeah.
We need this to start right now.
You would have to have that in the main to start right now. I mean, in what, twenty, whatever, twenty-twenty-four.
Not in the bank, but the, the, if I were to be honest with you, the legit one, the answer to that, honest answer is you probably don't need that exact amount of money, no. We can start, we can start generating revenue month one, and so we're generating revenue. Is it probably the safest idea, and I know we've talked, Mr. Corner and I have talked, being good stewards and having that money set aside for the employees. God forbid something that happens, we don't accumulate very much, then that's the perfect safety net that if we, there's gonna be learning curves, and we're not, we, we're not naive, and we, we know that. And so, if things don't go according to plan, this gives us a safety blanket to make sure we can, we can.
Save minimum, that's like a minimum number you had then.
That is, that is about.
Bare bones of.
About what's gonna cost for us to run this, yes. It depends on what we run, so a type three, I found them not too long ago, for one-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars a piece. Bare bones, no equipment on them. You get, we're gonna get, if we want the nice one, we get that nice, upper-level echelon ambulance. You're looking at, on, you're looking at anywhere between two eighty and three-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars per unit.
Loaded?
Some of them are loaded, depending on what we decide. You can get gurneys and stuff like that, there, again, every bell and whistle that you can get on a car, you can get on an ambulance too, and it can get pretty expensive.
But this is low-balling the collection too, the forty percent.
Yeah, so, again, I, we wanted to go on the very low side.
I'm trying to help you out here.
Oh.
So, I'm looking at your sheet here. It says, twenty, first year out, you're gonna spend one-point-one million dollars in one and two, type one and twos, correct? You're gonna spend two-hundred, uh, two-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars for twos, correct? So, you're gonna spend one-point-three million dollars just on units. And then you're gonna spend seventy-one thousand for radios, one-hundred-and-sixty thousand, is that correct number?
That's correct. That's for the equivalent for each truck throughout the entire year. The one-hundred thousand dollars is for the initial supply, so we can put it in a stock room, so when we run a call, we can come back and get resupplied.
And a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for.
For the, for the gurneys and the car gurneys.
Gurneys and monitors.
And so, your initial outlay is one-point-eight million dollars. That what you're looking for.
And that does include payroll, so.
Right.
Payroll's a big shit.
Capital outlay.
Capital outlay, capital.
Because normally you won't start out with thirty employees anyway, because you say you have to hire, and your number for employees.
Yeah, there's a very good chance we don't start with thirty employees. Very good chance.
Are y'all ready to start? If, if, if this went away, are y'all, is the fire department ready to, to?
I mean.
Can they handle this? I know what you, looking at your resume thing, I know, for that, is the fire department. Do you really believe the fire department can handle this?
Hundred percent, my whole heart, I believe that.
I know we've been wanting it for a long time. I know it's been fighting for it since I've been, so.
It's the thing that we just talked about in the shift meeting the other day, is we're gonna take adding people, adding people can be very difficult, and we know that. We're already running on these calls, and we're already treating these patients. A large percent of the time, we, our guys are riding in the ambulance, providing care already. We, we are prepared, it's just gonna be acquiring more equipment, a little more people, and then taking over that operation.
So, you see your biggest problem is staffing, your, your funding issue, or something?
I think, I think funding, to then to turn around, in sort of funding into staff, so.
Counselman Foster was mad to the point. Well, and mine was going back to the, the long distance runs. And like you said, we're not in this to make money, but those are, it helps us bring the cost back down. And the other major reason why we do it is so we have that, our citizens have that transport. And the reasons why the insurance is really willing to pay those is because they'd much rather pay the, the four-wheels than the helicopter or the fixed wing. And so, we bring, bring down the care, or the cost of care in our, in our area by being able to transport with ambulances. And so, that's my major thing, is I want us to be able to do that, and, and, I mean, nine-one-one's number one. But I do want us to have long transports, just because we, it just drives our cost of our medical up so high. My son in two thousand and fourteen had to fly to Albuquerque, and that was a, I think it was in fourteen, was almost eighty thousand dollars. And so.
Fixed wing.
No, that was, that was helicopter. And, and so, those, you know, and that was, you know, that's ten years ago, so, yeah. The, to travel by, by an ambulance would have been a heck of a lot cheaper, but he needed, he needed the actual direct care. And that's, insurance balked and balked, but they finally paid it, because it, they realized he needed that direct care. And so.
I think a thing that the, yes, there's a lot of things that we can, the area ambulance here, here in Roswell offers a very superior level of care that maybe not as well understood, so, and there provides a physician, a nurse practitioner, or a P A. They provide a provider, and so, it does provide a higher level of care that we cannot offer regardless, we don't have those working for us. And so, is it expensive? Yes. When they really need it, it's very well to have, but do you need to fly a broken leg? Probably not.
Can we buy those? At least, can we not, like, can we send in, put a doctor on there for long transport?
So, I mean, I'll just like doing a little vision myself, and this is just where I'm at, and I a hundred percent support that. We have a gentleman right now at the Roswell Fire Department who in two years' time will be in a scrap. And so, he loves EMS, he loves what he does, and all it, all it takes is getting a special approval and medical direction to, to cover those. And, man, we can, we can make a system what we want it. If we want to be the leading edge of that wing, if we want to be the example, we can, we can do that. We want to follow, follow suit, or just kind of yander in, we can do that too. I love being the leading edge. I, I say, let's go, let's go big, let's go home. I want, I just told them today that I want our, I want our units in the future to say, Mickey. I want them to be mobile intensive care units. I have full belief we can get us trained at that level. We just gotta take some critical care classes for paramedics, there's, the education is there, the training is there, we have support from people willing to give it to us. We just have to have ambulance to get to that point, and some years of time to get to that point. I, let's, let's shoot for the moon. Shoot for the moon, I think we'll succeed.
Counselman Alberson, you, or Albers, I'm sorry, Hillibrand, I'm sorry.
The other thing I'm, I think that you, your costs upfront are probably a little light, from the fact of you're gonna hire people, and you're not gonna put your work on it. You're gonna build that up, or you're gonna have a, a period where you're hiring people, putting them on a payroll before you get this thing running.
Okay.
You know, I think you probably got another additional two to three hundred thousand dollars in upfront costs before you ever even step door and make your first call.
Okay.
So, I think you're a little light in terms of. In terms of putting, putting personnel on.
Orientation.
You're not gonna say, okay, today I got ambulance service, you're on a payroll today.
Yeah, I see.
I'm gonna be on a payroll way before, yeah, some period.
Yes.
Before. So, I think you're a little light in your cost. I don't know what that number is, I'm just guessing at two-hundred.
I'm, I'm following you, and I, I agree with you, yes.
Yeah, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars.
I think when I, so when I originally built this, I built it for basically a July one takeover. And I had, technically, when I originally built this, I had cost built in for June of the year before, for orientation, for training, for things, so they would accrue. That was extra payroll that did not fall into the year.
Yeah, because you're gonna have people, you're gonna have to train.
Yes.
You're gonna have to have systems, procedures, probably, that you're gonna have.
Orientation's all mine.
All that's what I have to do. I don't know whether that's a thirty-day leave time, sixty-day leave time, ninety-day leave time, before you get there. But whatever those personnel costs are, those are gonna be upfront costs. So, that one-point-eight million dollars is gonna. So that one point eight million dollars is going to go to two point something.
This, yes, I don't, and I don't, I, you're, you're correct, I don't know what that timeframe is currently, so it'd be very difficult to figure out the exact cost, but I, I would agree that you're probably correct in the extra anywhere between one hundred and eighty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Depending on what we set up, when, we don't have drafts in terms of, of protocol, like what do we do with the new hire? We don't, we don't have that yet. Uh, can we take this over tomorrow? Absolutely not, no. Uh, is this, uh, is this in the future and we can start working this direction with, okay? Absolutely, we can get this done. Uh, these numbers were created in a couple months' time. Um, we, we will continue to work on this project and continue to firm everything up. This is, this is the best we got at this moment and, uh, so, yes.
Would it be, would it be fair?
Count, are you, are you done, Count?
Yeah. Well, on this point. So would it make your pulse a little better if instead of four million, we put four point two in there?
That's on the revenue side.
No, that's, it's, it's, yeah, it's revenue.
That's revenue, it's not the costs.
All right, go, you got a cost sheet there? Okay, there it is, four point two, excuse me, four point.
And at work, I'm, again, I'm not a financial expert, I have, I have some training in it to a degree and I'm open to ideas and suggestions that really, to truly even to pointing to some help for some of these areas and we want to do the best job and paint the clearest picture. We don't, we don't want to present a false picture whatsoever.
But you don't have any training including any, any, any of your costs right?
In our costs?
In any of the, the costs.
So I took, I took a massive level, I took a massive level finance course, that was part of my.
No, I'm not saying, I mean, in your.
No, oh, the training of the employees?
Training kind of stuff.
No, so. I'll stick a little bit, so training and employees, so say, say we do this and we're going to, we're going to adopt AMR or we're going to offer jobs, uh, to people within the system. The only training that they're really going to need to go through, uh, we operate on the same scope. We, we carry the same medications, we're trained, so everyone in Chivas County operates off EMS, same Chivas County EMS protocol. We all have the exact same level. We have some special skills, but AMR shares, shares the exact same special skills of the fire department. We've made that a point to keep it that way, so there's nothing that they can do that we can't, there's nothing that we can do that they can't. We're, it is unilateral, so the training would be bringing them on board, getting them maybe familiar with another ambulance and city rules and regs. And then we would, by that point, have our fully drafted operation plan and rules and regs of the fire department and so forth. So it'd be basically in-house training of just jumping on board with the city. We're not going to have to train them to a different medical level.
They have that basic fire training, right?
They don't, currently they don't, there are some people that work there that do, but majority of them do not. You know, all that stuff can be done on shift, it can be done in a, in a simple manner, just like we currently train now.
And when you, when you look up here and you have some of those are on forty eight and off ninety six, right?
On forty eight, I think so.
Yeah, so now if they're on forty eight and off ninety six, could, could those people end up being, say, work on a transport as part of their ninety six? And, and now it would be another patient or something else where if they, they wouldn't be cutting yards out there on the weekends, they can be out there running ambulances or whatever.
Yes, or it'd be the same, right now we have a rotating list at the fire department for overtime and the ambulance would be no different, they would get it'd be a rotating list, if they want, they get a phone call that morning and they choose to work, we'd be happy to hire them for overtime and they can run those, they can run those trucks.
But they wouldn't, they wouldn't necessarily count against some, uh, us for their overtime.
It would, it would, it would count as, to us as overtime. Yeah, it would count.
We got to pay them for overtime if they did that.
As long as it's over that one hundred and six, six hours, but if you work, if you work, I get, this can get really confusing, get really into the weeds. If you're a ninety six schedule, you have three different sized paychecks. You work a ninety six hour check, you work a one hundred and three and a half hour check and you work a hundred and thirty six point five hour check. So one check has no overtime on it, the one hundred and three hour, one hundred and three and a half hour check has no overtime on it. The one hundred and thirty six point five hour check has thirty point five hours of overtime, so that's already guaranteed, that's what they call the guaranteed overtime. If they work at ninety six in that two weeks, once they hit that, that threshold of one oh six, it converts to overtime, so if they have straight time, they will convert to overtime after twenty hours.
So they would be a high cost.
It'd be, it would be, it would be higher cost to transport them. You guys operate overtime to run, you guys utilize a lot of overtime to run your transfer trucks currently.
No, currently right now, currently right now, a lot of the, uh, transfer trucks are, they're, they're stacked, I mean, it's.
It's ready for staff.
Yeah, now we do, we do, when we run into where it's, uh, gets busy, we've got some trucks. But you were saying. The billable is like twelve dollars a mile or again, depends if it's Medicare, Medicaid.
Yeah.
And or if it's, if it's just running on private insurance and it runs on state care. It also, the mileage doesn't change, um, as far as tariff, it's still twelve fifty five a mile or if it's Medicare, Medicaid, it's seven, something a mile. But what changes is that the first initial mile of the treatment, the care, whether it's ALS or BLS. So the twelve fifty five going to eleven is. You're looking about three thousand dollars. Three thousand dollars, so I think we can afford to pay that overtime, now that it's three thousand. Now they did head back, but, but they're still, we're still getting three thousand for there and back. Cost of the, cost of the, the fuel, cost of the equipment and all that, but we can pay overtime at, at three thousand dollars for six hours.
Uh, yeah, now, what about for these individuals who are driving the ambulances? If there are people, what, are they just, have to be CDLs, do they have to be?
So once we, so once we take over, once we are able to bill for services, we have to be PRC compliant. Uh, and to drive an ambulance, you have to be PRC compliant, so all you have to do is get, uh, basically a CDL physical every year. Yeah, you, so you have to have your Class C, which fire department has Class Cs, we're training people in Class Cs all the time. Um, it's easy to get and then you have to have the CDL physical, which we do the physicals to that standard every year anyway. And we, that's part of the cost of the fire department as it is, and so we just let them fill out there.
Where everybody can drive.
Do what?
Two years.
Every two years. We do, we do health physicals every year, it doesn't cost us anymore to be CEO personally, so. That's the only thing, so Class C is just a piece of paper that we sign, it's into the E B.
Hey, Councilman Alberson.
So your, your cost, does that include? Are you expecting the ones doing the long transfers to be overtime or you, did you include them in the shift schedule normal? Well, they're like always on duty to do transfers.
Um, I have it, I have it set as, as overtime hours to take us down.
So that's part of your cost.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Arnold.
Um, so, uh, just to be clear, I noted the annual amount that you're basically budgeting at for the next five years is four million?
Just over the four million dollar mark for cost. Plus or minus, plus or minus whatever costs of material are. So that we, the way you see it now, sometimes cost goes up because there's, there's a short stock of certain things, so they'll drag a little price up and then it'll get you, so.
But you cover that, don't you, with the billing?
Yeah, plus or minus, yeah.
So what would it cost taxpayers if we're going to recover that?
Would it cost the taxpayers if we're going to recover that?
Is it four million for the taxpayers and then whatever billing comes in?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's offset.
A billing offset.
There's certain write-off costs, the med, the medical, I mean, you, you have to have some of it, I, I'm sure some of it, it's all perishable and some of it.
Everything we have.
You, you, it's a write-off cost.
Well.
You, you, we buy, we buy it and we have it and then we have to throw it away because it, it, but, but when it's used, yes, we get it repaid, but, but some of it, there's a write-off that, that is a cost.
So, okay, I, my point was the four million a year, and so that is with the forty percent reimbursable. That with the forty percent, you know, reimbursed through insurance or billing, then it'll cost us four million a year.
No, ma'am.
Well, that helps.
It, it, the revenue, we'll, we'll have a revenue stream that'll significantly decrease that.
So that's what I'm saying.
Yes, so. The cost to the taxpayer is, it depends on if we can get it approved tariff free. It depends on the call line for the year, it could be anywhere from two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to eight hundred thousand dollars. If services, if services stand or our costs go up, it could be up to a million dollars.
Some average forty percent in reimbursement, some average sixty or seventy. So that's, that's, whatever that reimbursement is, it's going to lower that money down.
I think what I'm trying to ascertain is the one sixteenth tax that we've been charged with voting on is for five, it's actually five to seven million at this point, which hasn't been substantiated. So if it's going to cost us four million or with reimbursement, if it's going to cost us three million, then why do we need all that funding?
That's, that's a great question, Al, I can.
I actually, I would like to do more research and I can talk to, I can take.
Try to answer that question.
That's Councilman, uh, Perry had his hand up first, and then, Councilman Perry.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm told agreement with, with, with my fellow counselor down there because that's what I, I asked for with the first part. We were first told that it was, uh, that the one sixteenth was a million and I, 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 my figures was one point six per sixteenth. So I didn't understand where they were coming to that conclusion and, and when I asked for the information, they, they've redone that and it's come out of the one on me and five hundred and fifty five thousand. So now in the email that we got, now it's been pulled from a five to a four. It's, but still, uh, I understand the upfront cost, I get that, but without, without a sunset, it's a no-go with me. I, because if, if it's going to generate what is being prayed to me here that it's going to generate then, then, and if this is what we're doing, these increases for this four sixteenths instead of five sixteenths now, which is still even at four sixteenths, we're still two point two million over. So now it looks to me like three sixteenths would cover, uh, but I understand there's upfront costs, I, I get that. But without a sunset, I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't understand the taxpayer very.
I'm not sunset too.
Well, how far down the road do you want to go?
What's that?
How, how far down the road do you want to go? Give us a date.
The sunset.
Three years, two years?
I, I'm being, I'm being told that it's going to generate, if you look at the paperwork, I'd have to look it up as to when. Uh, is there an expected off the first year, is that correct? Or are we expecting a, a?
I don't know what, I, my question is where I see it, where I am.
Yeah, and I don't know if you take your three years with, 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 well, without the tariff, that's the one I'm going with.
Right.
Because we're not, we, we don't have the guarantee of, of the tariff.
There's, there's the projected gap.
It costs seven hundred and eighty three thousand dollars.
So what is this for, for, uh, okay, so is this including what we're expected to have to pay out? Because here you've got your projected revenues here.
So this is the tariff increase.
This is tariff increase.
The tariff increases, that's why I made. No, no box is everything. This, this, this is the first three lines here, the tariff.
Well, where's up to two thousand thirty three?
I just, I did, I only did three years, uh, just to show, uh, the expense that it would be if we did not get the tariff.
Well, I'm looking here at the very first year of the, uh, of a projection of seven hundred and eighty three in losses. That's not four sixteenth. I understand, plus equipment. So that's where I think that finance needs to be brought into this equation and I, I'm, hey, you've done an unbelievable job.
I, I get it and I don't, I don't disagree with you guys, we, I'm not, I'm not here to roll in the cash, we want to provide a good service and break even at the end of the day and make sure that we're sustainable. We want to be sustainable to provide a great service, that's, that's all it is for me.
You've provided good information and I appreciate all the hours and everything you've put into here. I think that I would like to see our finance department more heavily involved with these figures as well. And our, was HR involved with the?
I got numbers from, from HR in terms of that, Janey, uh, did look at some of the other, the other costs, uh, the, the taxation. I was, I was not involved in the taxation conversation, uh, that was just brought up as a way to possibly fund it. I think it needs to be funded, to what degree? Again, we're going to run a great service, figure out, we're going to figure out that stuff as we go. That's why we can't implement this tomorrow. A lot of, Frank, it doesn't need to be ironed up for them.
Yeah, I'm sure everybody's on the same sheet of news as well.
Okay.
So pick a number, grocery receipts number have been in increase. And we enact it. And so you've got a ninety day window before it can be implemented by state. And there's actually, it could be more than that, it could be a hundred and eighty days, depending on your timing, because you just start, you just raise the rate either in January or July. Well, so let's assume for the sake of argument, we get it together, we figure out what we need to do and we get it in, in effect in January, we're not going to see first check to do anything with until March. So we're real close to the third quarter of the next fiscal year before we get a nickel. And, and you're not going to make uh, uh, enough money in collectible grocery receipts in my mind, to cover the amount that we're having to cover with the new contractor coming in, much less have anything. I don't want a bond, I, I want to write a check for this equipment. We're, we've got plenty of bonds out there, I don't want any more personally. And so if you read that language very carefully, there's caveat that and you, as a city council member, can come in at a later date and start a campaign for a sunset at any time. Uh, but, but, but time, pick a number, take a percentage. You can either proceed to get this going, maybe in two years, maybe not. Uh, but contract, oh, you just, is the contract signed with AMR right now?
Yes, sir.
It's done.
Yes, sir.
And it's one point three.
Yes, sir.
Um, one point three million dollars.
One three eight.
Three eight, okay. So we're taking that out of hide right now because we don't have any choice. We have to provide the service and we got to do it within what we have to play with, not any, don't focus on any potential increases because we're, we're going to struggle with that too. So regardless, if you go, if the decision is made to move the city of Roswell into the ambulance business, which hadn't been decided. And then what left? We're going to buy four boxes and, and get somebody else, a private entity, to do our transports for us? Those are all legitimate questions that need to be decided. And unfortunately, we need to do, in my opinion, we need to do it sooner than later. We can't sit on this for long because I'm telling you, going into the FY twenty five budget and having to cough up one point three is is going to be just as hard a year from now as it is right now today. And if you read that ordinance that was presented to us and you need to change the percentage of the, the grocery receipts number. But it's sad specifically that you had to have five million dollars, correct me if I'm wrong. You had to have a five million dollar budget or twice the cost of the amount paid off in the previous year before you can deviate any of that money. So that's the guarantee that I think is sufficient to make a valid argument to the taxpayers. If, if, Mr. Mayor, could you?
Yeah, I'll run the meeting, Mr. I.
I just want to say, any council, if you have a way you would like to see the ordinance drafted, please just shoot me an email with the gist of what you want and I can have a multiple version sent out so that you guys have a lot of different things to work on. Yeah, my emails, please, please feel free anytime I draft it, you're a player.
Oh, well, that was just the first blush.
Okay, Councilman Corn, now we have Council Lady Arnold.
So I actually want to concur, um, Chief Fuller, fabulous, I actually love, um, what you offer, Roswell, thank you, um, this information. But I'll be straight up honest, when I brought up wanting a workshop in legal committee, it wasn't about what you were going to do because you're the professional, I actually trust that you will build one of the best plans ever.
Appreciate that, thanks.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
What I wanted to know about was more about me taxing my residents. And I wanted to break down the concept. And that's why I was asking earlier, what does this look like? And so unfortunately, I had to come here to get that this is not what I was even asking about. And at this point, I have serious information overload in the wrong direction. And I actually assess better and research better at this point on my own because everybody got me lately confused. I'm not actually hitting on what really matters. How much is it going to cost my taxpayer and should I be taxing them for it? So that's kind of where I'm at.
Are you done?
No.
You know, I think one of the things when we look at this, you know, I think we need to look, we go to the taxpayers for an ambulance tax or whatever. That's all there. But I think we probably ought to look also, I, I think that the city has some other issues that we're really on thin ice on. When you go through and look about where we are on water, where we are on funding, on some of our issues on, on water. If we have a water problem like that lake out there, again, some of those things, I think we ought to look at some of our, our requirements under TSA. If, if some of those fines or anything else that we can do, figure out how, what our basic levels are. So we, once we do something, we don't get into a box later down the year with an, an emergency situation where we, we can't figure out how to fund it with that. And I, I just ask you to look at all the issues we have to make sure that we have a, a sound base going into the year, whatever we do here in going forward. You know, on whether you do, if you need one sixteenth or three sixteenths or five sixteenths, whatever, you know, that we look and sit down and make sure that we offer the citizens a, a, a really good base where we are, that we, we don't have to worry about having to come in and then, and having four fire or trash trucks crater or anything else that craters. I mean, we, there are some issues that I think at the airport that, at the airport alone, I think need to be taken care of with the lighting and the lighting system out there and things. But that, that's just one thing. I just want to be sure that we have, all our bases are covered so we have no surprises after we go for this. Because I think we're real close on our, on our finances, on where we are as to how much leeway we have. If, if some, if we get an unforeseen event here, I, I have so much reserves on that. And I would just ask that we look at that real close to make sure we have, if we have an unforeseen problem that like three and a half or whatever million dollars that was for the water leak, if we have something like that, we make sure we have enough money to cover it because there's not any other places to go back. I don't want to put any more bonds on the books for a while. I, I think we have, we have enough bonds on the books right now for a while. And so I want to make sure that we don't place our city in a, in a, in a place where we, we can't get out of without doing bonds. And, and that, I would just ask that we look at that. And I think, Councilman Perry, you had your hand up.
Just a couple of questions that I had when I had the floor earlier, but we've got another conversation. It's like, what's the county match going to be? That hasn't been discussed. And I know we've seen $20,000, you know, or, and had there been discussions yet with the county? Or where we at?
Well, the, the latest rumor is, and I suggested to the county, I said, take the population of Roswell. Because I said, well, where do we start? And I said, well, just take the population of Chavis County, take out the population of Roswell and figure out what your ratio is. And they, they, they have entertained, because I'm not going to put any words in their mouth, any stretch, maybe kicking in, of course, you know, they're, they're not rolling in dough either. Maybe 20%, maybe, maybe.
20% of what?
Of our cost. So in the case of the, just call it 1.4, it's a little less than that. Thank you to Chad and Mike and everybody who's involved in the negotiation. It's a long way down from that letter. Ike showed me a 2.6. And so 20% of that number.
280.
Might get you in the ballpark.
I got an idea. They could raise a couple of 1/16ths. Anyway, but you know, I, I think, I don't mean to be unkind to, to the county. I think that they're, they're an asset, that we need to work together. But at the same time, you take the population of Roswell and you take one of these ambulances and how far do they have to drive to get to the population of Roswell versus what does it take for them to get to Lake Arthur? What does it take to get to the Boo Hill? Whatever, you know, I think that those things need to be in consideration. Now, are they utilizing it as much? Probably not. And so I think those, there's fairness in both sides of that, that we need to have someone who's done this to, to look at that. That needs to be considered. The other things that I did not hear anything about in any of the, in the analysis is, you know, you add 30 employees, you know, you're adding significantly to a department. Is this going to, are we going to see, are we going to see more additions to our payroll department, to our finance department, to our HR department, to our legal department? So there's a lot more to this than just what we're seeing here. That, so I, I want to see a full picture. I want to see a full picture. And I don't know how hard that is to get to there. I'm sure I'm not the expert to begin it. I'm asking for something that I don't know how to get to it. Well, I think that that's, those are things we can be considered as well, because I know that there was discussions about an attorney taking over the community development department. Well, you know, that, how many people are in that department versus, okay, so if that's really the need and there's a need for an attorney for that amount, what's going to be the need? And especially when you're dealing with medical, I'd say there's probably high chance of people with litigation and different things that can go wrong. I don't know. But I think these are things that need to be considered. My, my end is, I, I'm, I'm agreeing with, with Counselor Arnold at the end of the table. What is going to do to the taxpayers is what I need to know right now. These logistics on, you know, how many trucks it's going to take and how many employees, that's an internal thing that needs to be done. I need to know what is the expectation from the taxpayer. And I, I, as a conservative, I don't, it's not, I'm not anti-tax. I'm anti-paying more tax than it takes to get the job done. Just like the water bill. I don't think that what, you know, whatever it takes to get water to my house and to get it out to the other end, I'm willing to pay that. Now, I'm not willing to pay mine and my neighbors and my next door neighbors that next to them as well. But I'm willing to up whatever it takes for me to get my services. The same with the ambulance. And, and, and Counselor Corn, I am not against it all if we need to get to that cushion, to, to get that starting. But 20 years from now, surely we've got this thing figured out. And, and if it's definitely what we're saying, I'm not the expert to be determining what that sunset needs to be. I think we need our finance department much more heavily involved in, in, in looking at this. I'm done.
Councilman Howard.
I have to. I just concur with you, Councilman Perry, because there's going to be more than 783,000. You've done a great job with these. But there were.
I, I, some of those indirect costs I did not include.
And we may be, I don't know whether that's another 700. Are we at the million for that we're currently at? There's something way beyond these numbers that need to be added in. So that you'll see what's, it's going to cost the residents of this community for this. And so I think we need another pass. I agree, we need another pass of these numbers with, and you just got to list your assumptions and that's all. You know, it's all you can do is make an assumption based upon, just identify what those assumptions are and we move on. So I think the number's a lot higher than expected. I'm going to forget when I go to the insurance cost. Because we will have it. You know we're going to have cost of litigation somewhere along the line. That's just going to happen.
Exposure.
We have a lot of exposure. And then the insurance cost to cover that, what do we, a million dollars is our liability maximum?
1.1.
1.1. So we've got a lot. And if you need to be reserving for those things, just in case. So I think there's a lot more cost to pull up here.
Thank you, Councilman Howard.
So say we, we implement the tax increase, that money will go into special fund just for ambulance, correct?
Right.
And say we do a sunset clause of three years and there's like $3 million still left over. What happens to that money? Does it stay in the fund just for emergencies?
It could be.
The way the term ordinance is drafted, that money just sits there.
We're not going to.
But you can always unrestrict it by, amend the ordinance. The council always has the ability to do these things. A sunset provision is very easy to access, one set.
And there's nothing to say we can't remove the sunset clause if we find that we're at home.
That's exactly.
Yeah, for expenses.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just say 10 seconds worth. But I, there again, I think that's something for that next council to determine. I don't want to bind my taxpayers, which they can always stop it at any time. I agree with that as well. But let, let a future.
No, I don't have a problem with sunset.
No, I'm agreeing with you.
I'm saying they can expand it later.
That's right.
But also, one of the things I was trying to point out before, I think the costs are going to be higher than that, the 700,000 as well. I don't think we have the places to go yank another 700 or 800,000 out of to pay, to pay if we're short. That's why I say that they, whatever, whatever finance level or if we do a tax increase on something, that we need to have enough money to pay the cost of, of what we're doing without, without any question. Because I think the finances are pretty, pretty tight in what we're doing. That's why I say you've got to have, there's not room to fight over paying for the ambulance and paying for a big water leak. And that, so that's, you know, just where we are.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me, budget, in my opinion, is tight as a fiddle string. And that's assuming nothing goes wrong. And you've got Mr. Call here, Mr. Matthews, he's not as good as he's going to be next year at this time. But it takes a while to get your arm around this stuff. I still don't. I'll admit it. I know a lot more than I did a year ago. But I'm not where I want to be. And I think I can, I can, I'm in, because he was part of this group that met for days and days and days. And Mr. Call came in when he could, before he was on the, on the payroll, and sat in on the last parts of it. And I'm telling you that this thing, if we got a hiccup, it's going to be tough. It's going to be really tough.
And we don't have the money.
We don't have any. We're going to be fine if we don't have any hiccups. And gosh knows what's going to happen. We'd have another water break tomorrow, heaven forbid. It'll be another $2 million to fix. These 36-inch lines are not cheap to replace. And they take a long time because nobody has those valves in stock. If you need a valve, if that's part of your fix, it's got to be made. And, and so that, and, and everybody knows that time is money. And the longer you wait for this stuff, the more money it's going to cost you. And, I mean, I mean, they can, Mr. Barafu, to allow them, if they have something to say, that would be great. Remember, Mr. Matthews was your acting city manager when he got that letter?
I was going to get there as soon as you got quiet. Okay. Anyone else who's been privy to this, any public member, anybody else who, would you have anything that you would like to address this workshop with? Anybody who has any experience? Anybody except Jared? Because evidently.
Daniel.
Daniel. He's poking a little fire. Anybody have any comments you'd like to make? All right.
Counsel, I've been doing this a long time with these guys. I've been fortunate enough to be part of that organization. In my mind, that they cannot provide this service. Unfortunately, you guys are the ones who have decided to use our power and our energy. We're willing to get together and what you in any way possible to be the event for all these questions. If the council would have, you want to open the finance department and try to, to get answers that you need, you can make a good and formal decision. As far as the organization goes, I'm very confident in them. I'm very confident in the organization that provides the support today.
I still like your famous quote.
Which one?
At 165,000, it's a lot cheaper to pay for someone else to have the headache. At 1.4, 2.6 billion, we might as well have the headache. Because you're right.
So as a kind of an outsider walking into work, I'll tell you, it's been fast and furious. So I think we're doing all the right things. You as the government authority, from what I've seen, this is a tight budget. We do have a heavy debt load that has been taken on in recent times. We know that our employees are our number one priority and we know that it's so tight that we're not able to provide cost of living like we've seen in recent years. So we know that it's tight. And we know that those water valves, anything happens, which something happens every year at some point. The question is not if, but when in that much. So I know it's always a tough decision. It's a political decision when you're talking about tax increases of any kind. I know that state Medicaid rates have been adjusted for quite some time. That was part of our discussion with AMR. The state rural Medicaid rates have not been adjusted to meet federal Medicaid rates, which would have significant, significant impact on those revenues to AMR or to whomever it's providing the service. I think there are some unanticipated costs. I think Councilmember Brad is absolutely right on the money. Want to thank Dan and Randy and our fire team for putting this information together on the fly. We rolled out the line items, all the different scenarios of how you could set this up, potentially make it fly. I think they've done an outstanding job. They got it, everything guaranteed they have a tough, but I think they've done an excellent job of trying to get everything and anticipate as much as we possibly can. There's, as Councilmember Corn alluded to, there's a timing issue of how quickly you can implement, put these things in place versus when you started receiving those revenue supply chain issue, as we know with any type of equipment, particularly vehicles and particularly specialty vehicles. There are supply chain issues, timing issues with that. So none of this is easy. None of this is simple. I think you're doing the right things, asking the right questions in terms of the revenue that needs to be generated to make this work. I think Mr. Matthews, at our, my perspective, fire department's perspective, legal's perspective, our concern is level of care, quality of service. We want to maintain that. My understanding it is good, has been good, and attribute that to what I've heard about KP's leadership here in town with AMR. So it's not an argument against KP. So it's not an argument against KP, but I'm sure he's got a outstanding job. And certainly, if we're thinking about standing that up from, we'd have to give those being at our stations. So I think all of the, we're in the process of exploring. I think that's exactly what you should do. I think we should continue to hammer this in the best interest of our community, and certainly.
Thank you. Steve Fadman, do you have any comments?
Oh, mayor.
All right, come on.
Yes, sir.
Okay, no one else in the room? Anybody on the public have any comments? I guess not. Is there any other issues come before us today? Okay, this workshop will be concluded. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Mr. Fuller, thank you very much.